Okay, it's nine o'clock. A meeting is called to order. We're meeting in the central jury room of the Hood County Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl, Granbury. And the first order is a pledge of allegiance.
Imputation.
By Morris Simpson. And then the pledges.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we come once again to give you praises and thanks. Father, we just want to thank you for all the good things that you have done here in Hood County. We want to thank you for all the hard work that's being done by our officials and by our citizens. Father, we just thank you for the blessings that you have given us with the good weather. Father, we ask that you just continue to bless each and every one of us. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to this great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want me to pledge to Texas?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Do we have any special presentations this morning? Okay, the first, under A, we have a special presentation from Donnie Green, the Chief Aging Program Officer at North Central Texas Council of Governments Council on Aging.
Good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Judge Cochran and Commissioners, it's a pleasure to appear before you and provide an annual report to the county on the programs that have been sponsored by the North Central Texas Council of Governments Area Agency on Aging and to let you know about services that are available to residents of the county. So, the mission of the Area Agency on Aging is to provide a comprehensive network of social services for people age 60 and over and their family caregivers. We receive most of our funding from the federal government, little bit of funding from the state of Texas as well. And we provide a number of services to older adults, their family caregivers, and younger persons with disabilities. And I'd like to mention those very quickly. I would like to preface the service information by saying that all of the services that we support are available at no charge to people who qualify. So, there are two different ways that we provide services. One is through contracts. The other is on a direct service basis. And the program that's really the cornerstone of our department is the Home Delivered Meal Program. And we're very, very proud to be a supporter of Hood County Committee on Aging. We do provide some funding for its Home Delivered Meal Program as well as its Congregate Meal Program. And we also contract with them for transportation that's scheduled in advance and provides curb-to-curb assistance. This year, we intend to pass through at least $232,000 to the Hood County Committee on Aging in support of its nutrition and transportation program. So, in addition to those contracted services, we also provide a number of direct services. We provide information about programs that serve older adults, both those that are provided by our agency as well as those that are made available through other community agencies. We provide benefits counseling, which is help understanding public benefit programs like Medicare and Medicaid and some of the VA programs. We were recently awarded a special grant to help people who are receiving Medicare benefits and have low incomes qualify for some federal programs that help them out with Medicare deductibles and co-payments. And oftentimes Medicare beneficiaries with low incomes don't receive the preventive care that they need because they're really concerned about having to come up with that money out of pocket for those deductibles and co-payments. We also have a number of programs that help older adults who have been through a healthcare crisis, whether it's hospitalization, a stay in a nursing home, or a rehab facility. We have workers who will assess their needs and provide various services in the home, which can include minor home repair. And we were selected by the state to receive funding for a program to build wheelchair ramps for older adults who are just coming out of the hospital. We can widen bathroom doorways so that wheelchairs can safely pass through. We do a lot of handrails and grab bars. We do a lot of medical equipment to keep people safe in their homes. We lease emergency response devices for people at risk of falls, medication, monitoring devices. And again, all of those services are available at no charge to people who qualify. We also have a number of programs that support family caregivers of older adults. And we can do all of the things I mentioned in terms of home repair, emergency response devices. In addition, we can do respite vouchers to give family caregivers a break and also pay for counseling to help caregivers work through the emotional aspects of caregiving. We do have programs for grandparents raising grandchildren. We're able to assist grandparents who are at least 55 years of age in caring for grandchildren under the age of 18. We can provide limited funding for summer camp daycare by back-to-school clothing and also pay for grandparents to meet with attorneys and establish guardianship over their grandchildren. Historically, our agency has been limited to working for at least 60 years of age. But during the last few years, we've expanded our eligible population. We're now able to work with people of all ages who have disabilities, including children with disabilities, young adults with disabilities, and provide them information about federal and state and local services that can provide them services in the home so that they can remain as independent as possible rather than go into nursing homes or group homes. We also have a very robust program to advocate for the rights of nursing home residents. The research suggests that about 2/3rds of nursing home residents never receive a visitor. And so, our ombudsman program makes sure that the residents are doing well and that their quality of life and quality of care are as good as they can be. We also help nursing homes, nursing home residents return to the community through our relocation program. Again, my purpose in being with you today is to thank you for your support. A number of years Hood County has provided funding to our agency to help support both our contracted and our direct services. The county contributes about $91 to $9200 per year. And again, in return for that generous support, we do provide funding to Hood County Committee on Aging. Again, this year, we estimate that that'll be at least $232,000. We provide direct services during the first half of the fiscal year. The value of those direct services provided to Hood County residents was a little over $33,000. But most important of all, I wanted you to know that we're out here, that we stand ready to assist, that we do have services that are available to your residents. And we target those who are really kind of hanging on by a thread in the community, who really need some advice, some counseling, some direct services in order to remain safely in their community. So, with that, I'll be happy to entertain any questions or concerns you might have.
Does anybody have any questions for Donnie? Do you want to introduce your Hood County members?
Absolutely. So, our program is supported by the Regional Aging Advisory Committee. And that committee is comprised of two members from each of the 14 counties that we serve. Our Hood County representatives, I'm not supposed to have favorites, but have consistently been my favorites for years and years. J.C. had to cycle off of the Regional Aging Advisory because he hit his term limits. He had served as president. He recruited Evelyn Garen. And we've been delighted to have Carol Cochran represent the county as well. So, very, very grateful to the county for its support, both financial and in terms of human capital.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. This is good information to have because I know a lot of people utilize these programs and more could if they knew about them. So, thank you for updating us on all of this. Okay, next is update on the progress of the Fallen Officer Memorial. It says county judge, but the sheriff is going to come forward.
Judge Commissioners, if you'd like to introduce. On a bill. Working on this morning.
Okay. Thank you. This is down our state. You wonder after you look at it.
Not used because they are not. You can use the right one. Use the least ones that are all working.
Okay.
We have originally set everything, like you said, a work in progress. Larry's been dead 23 and a half years. We still do not have one more. Just lost land. And we have, we have a fireman's park and have a veteran. And this is for the community of Hood County. Only officers too. Okay.
So, the Hood County Call Officers Memorial, the memorial already set up. Have the names of the two officers on the line of duty. It will be for, it will be for any officer. That will include the PD Sheriff's Department, DCP, any constable, game warden, anything like that in Hood County killed in the line of duty. We're trying to get it twisted together and set up so it will be permanent. Currently, it will have three stones. The two stones will have, it'll just say Hood County Fallen Officers Memorial on the first one and have the eagle with the flag and all that on it. The second stone will have poems about law officers killed in the line of duty. The third stone will have names on it. And we want to leave enough room that, God forbid, we have to, we can add an extra stone in the future. Once this is done, if officers killed in the line of duty, they have told us that it will take approximately 80 to 100 bucks now to go in and sandblast it in about three weeks to have it done, to have their name added. This way, it's not a long drawn-out process. It can be done immediately. It can be done quickly and to be able to do a memorial for each officer when it happens instead of having to wait. The stones we did out of natural stone, the paper, it's going to have like a walkway going around it and it'll be done in circles with a star in the middle and the American flag and the Texas flag and the Fallen Officers Memorial flag in the middle of the star. Stones will be around that with a bench in front of each stone that people can sit there and look at it if they'd like to. And it'll be handicap accessible with the walkway going around so that people who've been in wheelchairs or anything else can get to it easily and be able to see it. Currently, we are still trying to get the rest of the funds raised. We have gotten a better idea on how much it's going to be to do it now that we know how much we need for the stones and everything. We need to get a fundraiser started and try to do the rest of it. It was. So, currently what we have is the, right now in the memorial account, there's $2,547. We still owe, we paid half of the guy that did the designs, his name's Mark at Accent Rock. We paid him half. We owe him $1,800 still. Accent Rock is going to be $1,000 for the three stones that we have to get to do.
Which they already ordered.
And they've already ordered them. And it's $1,200 total, $400 each to install each one of the stones for the installers, the heavy equipment for them to cement them in, make sure that they're sturdy and everything. And we need to get another fundraiser done to do that and then landscaping. And we're not. Okay. I wasn't sure you were going to check into that. And get the landscaping done. They said that they should be ready, as soon as we get the funds, they should be ready to do these, he said, very quickly. He was hoping within six months is what we're hoping for. And then that other last picture I gave you is where they actually. If you would like a bigger area, is that very, it'll be very small, but you have to add whatever you think else to make the wall.
It doesn't allow any more.
Like, going to be very compact for that little section they gave us originally. I'd like to get something a little bigger. County, so they told me if it was county, then we didn't have to worry about it at the first time. I'd like to get a little bigger spot.
Y'all have any ideas, Roger?
Yeah. He's down.
Yes, and with the tree.
Right. It's not real big. Not real big. And, you know, we don't know. My daughter and I, we looked around and took pictures and I don't know what's county, what's not, you know? We talked.
Chandler Park.
I don't know.
I don't know where Chandler Park is.
It's not county.
So, just something bigger than that little section so that, God forbid, that maybe in 10 years, you have to add a lot of names and another stone. There will be the capability to add it.
Okay. Are you working with the sheriff's office on that with land, I mean with BIF and?
We talked and we went over it and started doing it. And then as we worked with Mark from Accent, taking a lot longer than we were hoping, but he's saying it's going to be done. And now that's getting close and we have everything in place before because the little sketch I showed you, concreting in a big block, that's $400 per stone, concreted in to make it more stable and in case storms are worse.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for the update. And I guess the sheriff can look for a different, a bigger spot or BIF can. So, thank you for the update.
We'll get it worked out.
All right. All right. Well, thank y'all very much for coming. Y'all need all that paperwork back?
Yeah.
Okay. Does any citizen wish to comment about any agenda item? If they do, would you please raise your hand? The sheriff has forms for you to fill out. Anyone? What?
Francis.
Sure.
I'm John Francis.
And I'm Dave Francis.
Son of Deputy Larry Miller. All this time I've been growing up, I've heard about how he was a great person, how he used to do stuff. And I remember going to all of the memorials for him when they did them in San Antonio and Austin. Austin. But I remember having to go to those and see new names be putting on the stone. And my siblings asked too. I would really wish to have one closer so we wouldn't have to drive so far to go something for him and other officers.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Hey, Judge, before they step down, this plan's been ongoing though for years. We've been waiting for you to draw the plans because you were going to get back with the sheriff and give them direction on what you wanted. And, I mean, the county will step up and be glad to help because it's our county employees. But the last communication that you had at the court was you wanted to work out your demographics and the plans, and we're waiting on you. And I see the sheriff's dismay looking in his eyes, and that's, I don't see that very often in the sheriff, okay? So, we're waiting. You bring back a plan and, I mean, we're talking about, we'll find the money or we'll help you fund it or we'll get it done. But why would you want to be anywhere else but the sheriff's office when they were both deputies?
No, that's not it. Is that what you're saying, that area? Or just to work with them?
No. Why would you not want to be at the sheriff's office? Because, I mean, that's where they were both deputies.
Well, there's different areas. I'm sheriff. For that one area right there.
I understand that. But I foresee before we fill up the stones, God forbid, that the sheriff is going to come to court and whoever sits in our seats, and before y'all have grandchildren and y'all are all dead and gone, we're going to have to build a jail. And you're not going to want to leave it at a building that turns into something else. As we move the jail, I'm sure the memorial would move with it. So, if I was you, I would try to get it built in a timely manner and try to get it done in front of what, you know, simulated what they did. And that's, they're both police officers. And I'd work with the sheriff and that was a direction I thought, I think even before anybody else on this court except myself, had said, we just needed plans and to go forward.
Well, Mark was the one from Accent. He was wanting to talk about. He was wanting to talk about. He has to stop.
That's fine. I just don't want to leave the impression that the county or the sheriff's dropped the ball on this, okay?
No. We've had several meetings with the sheriff, with the sheriff's office. Just these last two weeks, we got the original, the final plans. We hadn't been able to test it. Then on the final.
Well, I would suggest, Roger, that you take her plans and you have a meeting with Tim Flower and yourself, and we actually sketch it out if we have to find another person to do the stonework, okay? I mean, the cement work. But we need to move forward on this. I agree with you. Okay?
Thank you. Again, I repeat, does any citizen wish to make any comments about any agenda item? If they do, would you please raise your hand? Sheriff has a form for you to fill out. We'll see and none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda. Does any commissioner wish to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved. Approve the consent agenda.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Dever and seconded by Commissioner Berry. Any further discussion? Then all in favor? Aye. Opposed? The motion carried. The next item is subdivision roads and plats. I believe we're on development and compliance, right? All right.
Good morning, Judge Cochran. Commissioners, a public hearing this morning discussed the combining of lots 52 and 53, which would create a lot called 52R and be 10 acres in size. Property is in the water quality district of Brazos River in 52. This replat, as presented, adheres to all the regulations in Hood County. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. A public hearing is now open to discuss and consider the replat for lot 52R in the orchards on the Brazos. Is there anybody that wishes to make comments? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve this replating of this lot of 52R and Ocean, Orchards on the Brazos.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Barton. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Taut. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Budget and finance.
Consider line item amendments.
Judge Commissioners, this morning we have four budget amendments, two small ones and two large ones. The small ones, the librarian requests to move $50 from travel into membership dues to cover unexpected increase in membership fee. The fire marshal asks to move $860 out of fuel and oil into vehicle repairs to cover an unexpected vehicle repair. The two large ones, I'd like to certify additional revenues and make it available to the court to increase the current year budget. This is representing two items that have been refunded from Texas Association of Counties out of their insurance program. The first one is in the amount of $73,972. And this represents miscellaneous revenue that has been received as a refund of previous year reserve requirements in the unemployment insurance program. So, I would certify that additional revenue, $73,972. And then another representing a payment from the Texas Association of Counties. This was from the renewal of health insurance, a renewal credit in the amount of $78,637. And the sum of those is $152,609. I certify that revenue to you. It is available for you to add to the expenditures budget under Local Government Code Chapter 111. What I would suggest is for now, unless you have a particular object you'd like to apply it to, that we put that into a general contingency line so that you could determine later where you wanted to apply that or appropriate it.
I agree with Stan. I think that'd be a good place to put it.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve these budget line item amendments and these two additional certified additional funds under Local Government Code 111 dot 10106. I have a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Dever. A second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Payment of bills.
Judge and Commissioners, the total of the bills for your consideration today on this list come to $389,191.72. There are a few large items. First is to the City of Granbury for utilities, $36,014.57. To Hood County Appraisal District, our quarterly installment for contract service fees in the amount of $149,569.25. And then to Texas Association of Counties for their insurance programs, $42,440.50. And to the U.S. Bank National Association, this is for our fuel cards. Consider property tax assessment and collection contract. We're going to table this. This was supposed to be on the twenty-third court, and it, so we're just going to table this. The, there's no problem with it at all. It's already done. It was just, we're just going to move it closer to the time when the appraisal district meets and to approve the contract. So consider for approval the 2015-16 holiday schedule and take appropriate action. Commissioner, precinct forward.
We're at that time of the year where we need to approve the holiday schedule for the 2015-2016 year. I know that the treasurer and the auditor and the, and your office, Judge, put together when vouchers have to be turned in, and Stan needs to work off that, know what our dates are, and as we get closer. So what I proposed, and with the help of magistrate assistant, we just pulled off the same holidays we had last year and coincided them with the right date. So what you have in front of you there is the same thirteen days off that we've had in the 2014-2015 year. So as you see, it starts October with Columbus Day through the Labor Day for the next budget cycle.
Well, do we have any conflicts with any, for days off with the commissioners' court?
Not that I know of yet, but Ms. Hitt hasn't set the, and I haven't asked Katie, but they haven't set the jury's schedule for this building yet. I mean, that far out. So right now, I mean, and that's usually a Monday when you have, for example, the Martin Luther King or the President's Day. Sometimes on that Tuesday, juries are being boredired in here instead of, so I haven't, that's, right now, we just have to get something in place for Stan and the treasurer to work off of for the dates and times for turning in, but this is the closest, you know, and the thing is, you look at overlap, this is easier. Next year's a little more difficult. We looked at 2016, 2017, the way Christmas falls, the way some of those fall, if all weekends. So this was a pretty slam dunk way to figure this one out.
Okay.
But Monday is July the fourth, so most likely it'll be a three-day use of the square again by the chamber when you look at July the second, third, and fourth being on Monday. But we did cross-reference that and double-check that, but it's for, it's up for discussion.
Okay. Well, everybody's got that schedule in front of them, right?
I've studied, looked at it, and I agree with it.
I'm sure there's a mistake.
I think it looks good. No, it looks good to me, Steve. There's no.
I mean, there's just no way to know, Judge, until we start letting everybody see what we've approved, and then we'll know about space and what we, one year, we picked Friday off, and everybody took Monday at the city and everybody. So we try to coincide with the school district and the city, and somehow we picked wrong. But when Wayne McThethan was there, he would call down and look at our schedule, and so we might offer it to Mr. Kaufman and show him, that way everybody that has spouses and kids are crossing each other there. So anyway, that's what I put up. It's the same days off, and it's at least a template to work off of. Your second sheet there is the one I pulled from the federal holiday log just off the computer to show you what our actual federal versus religious holiday.
Okay. Well, then, I'll entertain a motion to approve this holiday schedule.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Berry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dever. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. I believe that's it. We are now adjourned. It is ten thirty-eight.